Meeting is being recorded and may be broadcasted or rebroadcasted on Westford Cat. All members are here, so we'll no need for roll call. We'll start as usual with open forum. Mr. Genowitz, do you have anything?
Just if anybody did come for 50 Main Street, the library renovation project, they did request to continue the matter without discussion through the December 16th meeting.
All right. Anybody in the board, anything? Open forum?
No.
Audience? Seeing none. Can we have a motion to continue PB 2425, 50 Main Street, to our December 16th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
At seven o'clock here in this room. Motion seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 24157 Carl Thompson Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
For the record, attorney Melissa Robbins from Law Firm Affarell &amp; Robbins. Also with me is Matt Waterman, the project engineer, and Walter Erickson, the applicant. Since the last meeting, there have been no further plan revisions. We did reach out to engineering, I shouldn't say we, I think staff reached out to engineering to make sure that you got a final letter, which you have in front of you. We had no outstanding comments. There were some recommended general conditions of approval, which we've agreed to all of them, so we had no issues whatsoever. So, very clean letter, very straightforward, happy to answer any questions you have about that. I think that the other thing you have in your packet is the draft decisions. There's five of them, because now everything is done individually. So, they're very much the same, but very much different. So, I did have a lot of reading to do today, but I think obviously staff did a really good job in putting this together. All conditions of approval were accounted for. I didn't see anything outstanding. The waivers all got picked up in the proper decisions. Unless the board has any questions, I will turn it back over to you to talk about the decisions you have in front of you and to your staff.
Good job. We got something?
I will just note just a couple minor revisions that Attorney Robbins did request, like spelling the word forest and Forest Road, and just cleaning up the front issue, the front yard setback sentence, just to, you know, make it clear that it does need the front issue, the front yard setback. So, that was pretty much it. No other real changes in there. I think maybe those one, the war pod decision letter, just to make it clear that there are no hazardous materials in there. Lose condition 16 in the decision letter. But in the event that there is, they will go in front of the board and help as required.
All right, great. I'll go to the board. Any discussion? Bob?
Yeah, on the order of conditions, I think it was condition 29, I noticed in that condition that it's to be provided every three years.
Which decision letter? I'm sorry?
Okay, it's the only one that has that in there. Stormwater management permit, conditions of approval. It's page 167 of the packet. The engineering department recommendation was an annual inspection, and it was written as every three years in the conditions of approval. I believe it's page 11 in the packet where you find it in the engineering report.
I think it is typically annual.
Okay, we can, if you're amenable to that change, we can make that change.
Yes, amenable to that change.
All right, nice job, Bob.
So, that was first point. I found that because in reading through it, I guess I was going to ask for just a little bit more detail in that annual report. I'd like it to include informa-- I don't want to see the same letter every year, because that doesn't give me confidence they did anything. I'd like to see that it provides the dates of inspection that occurred during the previous year, and any findings or remediations that had to be made as a result of those inspections. Just a little bit more meat than we came, we saw, we went.
We're happy to provide those. We have to prepare them anyway when we go out to do inspections.
Well, actually, after that, it's the property owner.
Yes, I just mean it's, we have to do it as part of the O and M anyway, so it would be an easy report to submit. So, we're happy to add that detail in there.
Yeah, I just, and the other thing I noticed, where was it? Just the phraseology about certificates of occupancy. I had a question. Do we expect just one certificate of occupancy for all of the units, or are there going to be COs for each of the individual units?
Typically, it's by each individual unit.
Okay, wasn't clear, because the engineering report was singular, and then I detected plur-- plural with it later. I just wanted to understand that. That's really all I have.
All right, great. Joni?
No, nothing, thank you.
Dylan?
No additional comments, thank you.
Darren?
No new comments, nope.
Did we close the public hearing last time?
No.
No, I don't think so.
No. Anybody from the audience have any comments they want to make?
Relative to the conditions.
Patrick Shields, 51 Forest Road. I have a couple things the said before, so I won't get into, say, the high level of concern of water. The specifics of that, though, is that the, being 44 percent, maybe it was reduced to 42, I can't remember, but the Water Protection Overlay District tries to limit to 15 percent, and that going to this level kind of defeats the purpose of trying to protect the environment from having too much impervious service. So, I ask that you consider that for a reason not to approve this. The other thing is, I, you know, looking at this, I wanted to try and get a better model, but I finally tried to scale what the plans were into a map that shows the actual images of the houses and other buildings, and that the largest other building is a quarter the size from the industrial size, and, you know, 10 times or more bigger than all the other houses, and that how, just to get a sense of how impending this is, even reduced, is still a very impending. It takes over a large area of forested land that has drainage, that from other notes have had drainage problems anyways from the road. So, I just don't think this is going to scale well, and being able to handle the drainage issues for water from all that imperviousness. The other specific part for that was that, and I didn't go back and find all of the raw reports to link it to, but the depth of the high water level was as low as four feet high, four feet below grade. And I don't know how, there was also a note that the stormwater management system was supposed to be at least four feet above that. So, that would mean it would have to be above ground in some places. So, I don't know how that they were able to actually achieve the water filtration, the stormwater management filtration system being four feet above the water table when the water table is so high. And--
I mean, Mr. Waterman, can you respond to that comment? I mean, I'm not the expert in water tables and--
Yeah, no, and typically when we're doing the infiltration systems, where, if I remember correctly, they were broken up into two systems at each end. We do testing in each of the areas, and then we do have the groundwater offset with stormwater management, which is similar to what Title V changed back in like 97, 98, where you have to be four feet above the groundwater. Stormwater management is consistent with that now. But there is a caveat that you can reduce it to two feet with groundwater mounding calculations. So, typically, we provide that in our stormwater report, which is reviewed by the engineering department in great detail, generating nine plus 15 plus pages of comments. So, I assure you that they've gone through every aspect of the stormwater management design. But typically, that's how we are maintaining that groundwater offset for the infiltration systems.
And in the existing flooding, because I'm not familiar with the Carl Thompson side, because I haven't said, the existing flooding or drainage issues from the road, was that being addressed in the project, or is there a requirement that the town take that on to not, you know, because it seems like that would be linked?
Which road?
Carl Thompson.
So, I mean, I don't know. Will you answer that? I know you guys aren't doing it on the road.
And I wasn't aware of any flooding issues that had been discussed either by--
I think we discussed that on the other lot that was on the corner.
Okay.
If you remember, Mr. Guthrie's parcel.
Yeah, I do remember that now.
And we discussed, that was the issue up there. And I think we, I, we did ask about that in one of the first meetings here, because we had just closed the other item. But it's a different parcel, and it's further down.
Ma'am?
If you could have the microphone, sure.
Alisa Nikashin-Holzberg, Betty Lane. My comments are in no way speaking to the proposal, I'm just speaking to fact. And that is during that hearing with Mr. Guthrie, I recall we were, all of us discussing here, the fact that Carl Thompson did have drainage issues. It wasn't up to today's snuff, right? It wasn't up to today's standards. So, I would think that the board would want to look at what the entirety of Carl Thompson looks like, and what that might cost the town to address this size of a project, whether any mitigation is necessary as part of the project or not. But I don't see how we could ignore that question, because it was clear during that hearing that all of Carl Thompson is something that should be discussed.
Yeah, I guess I agree, but I'm not sure we discussed it as all of Carl Thompson. At that time, we had focused down--
Down by the corner, yeah.
The conversation was clear about all of Carl Thompson, because I live at the other end next to him.
But to your point--
And he confirmed what I was saying about my end of the street as well.
Let me hear me out. But to your point, I guess I would go back and ask Mr. Waterman if they could go back and investigate that at this time.
Yeah, that's all, exactly.
So, yeah, that was an earlier discussion, Matt. That was last spring.
And I can say that that was the first hearing before stormwater, before any of the stormwater went out for review, I believe. I think we spoke about it, about the Groton Road application, and then we talked about general stormwater, about this application before stormwater went out for review to your staff.
Oh, correct.
Yes, and so now stormwater has been completely reviewed. We are 100% complying with standards. This site is creating no more runoff today than it, post-development, that it is creating pre-development. We actually are making it better onsite. And I think engineering has signed off on all of that on the site, even to the water that comes off of Carl Thompson or that we're putting onto Carl Thompson. So, there's no question that we comply to all standards here.
And there's drainage improvements for the drainage that comes off of Carl Thompson.
Right.
When they constructed it, it was to extend, I think, further towards Oak, Forest Road. And then when they extended the drainage pipe, it just kind of stops in the middle of the woods, and it, it's like a pit. So, the outlet is submerged. And so, what we did was we picked that up, and we extended it further so that it daylights further towards the wetlands to the, further south, I guess, south and west, towards Forest Road. So, there's a, an extension and work within that drainage for the Carl Thompson drainage to extend that pipe to where it functions as designed when it was built. Because it's right now, it's just a pipe that's in a hole. So, if you go out there, it's just like a submerged.
So, that was going to be my other question. I don't know if it's related. There is a drainage system that I've never seen documented on GIS or anything else, but I know that exists that starts from the vernal pond in my front yard and goes over, and I know it's relevant. It's, you know, because I know 29 Forest previously was unable to do things they wanted to because of that drainage existing. And I don't know where it goes. So, I don't know if there's any documentation on that, so we know where that goes, and if that's in any way going to, you know, the project is not proper based on where that is. You know, do we have any documentation on that?
So, is this on this property?
I don't know. That's what I'm saying, I don't know where it is or where it goes.
So, I mean, I, I don't know that we would have any information.
Do you know where, you said there's a drainage pipe. Do you know where it connects to?
The one that we're talking about comes from the catch basins that are located in the paved area of Carl Thompson, and then it extends down our property line with the butters.
Like down the property line to Forest?
Correct, directed towards Forest, and it's within an easement. And that's one of the conditions of approval is that we'll firm up that easement, because that easement language is never recorded, and so we've agreed to do that and make the improvements to the drainage pipe to function as it was designed. But beyond that, I'm not aware of any other drainage along Forest.
And so, really, what's before us is the questions that are relevant to this parcel. I mean, I don't, the developer doesn't have any liability or responsibility for Carl Thompson. It's a public way that the town should be taking care of.
Right, no, my question is, is there a drainage pipe that goes across the property that they don't know about? Because it's not--
If they don't know about it, I don't know how legal--
Well, I know, I know it goes somewhere, because I have one side of it, and I know it goes towards their property. I just don't know where.
That's kind of a tough question. If they knew about, we could talk about it.
Well, I guess the question is--
It sounds like there are concerns with drainage in, on Carl Thompson, which is something that should be brought before engineering if they're not aware of it already, but--
Well, which brings, which begs a pretty good question, Joe. Absent from tonight's meeting is engineering. Not that I don't love a good letter as much as the next person, but it does strike me that it's been some time since we've seen engineering at one of these meetings. And when we have large developments going in, in areas where there are drainage concerns, it would be helpful, please let the record show that it would be helpful if we had engineering in attendance to help us answer these difficult questions. That can be--
And I think--
To the extent that I'm able, that's an official request from me, to have a stronger engineering presence when we're in a final decision taking for parcels such as this.
And relative to that, Dylan, I guess I'd like to ask engineering how the drainage issues that were discussed for the previous parcel relate to this parcel and the review they did. I understand the applicant is only responsible for the stormwater management for this parcel, but we still would like to relate this to those issues that we discussed last spring.
One additional comment. When we did do the sizing of the pipe for the drainage extension within that easement for the drainage coming off Carl Thompson, engineering did ask for kind of a high-level drainage analysis for the volume of water coming into that pipe to make sure it was sized adequately, which we did.
Let me ask you this, Matt. So, that's the water coming from this parcel. Is the pipe starting at this parcel?
No, this is the drainage coming off Carl Thompson that--
In general?
Comes, yeah, from the paved portion of Carl Thompson.
And so, does that account for the other water that's coming into it from other parcels?
It does. Most of the parcels, the individual sites, while they were done before stormwater management for the individual sites, there was an addition that was done to Lavelle Machine where they did put in drainage onsite. The property that's directly to our north, which is at the very end of Carl Thompson, they have formal drainage onsite, so they handle their, all of their own stormwater. So, that was part of our review when we were looking at it, is looking at how much of Carl Thompson plus the adjacent developments that are along Carl Thompson. And so, we did analyze that. So, if you, Joe, if you look where Joe is and you zoom in--
I think the parcel--
If anyone is familiar with Lavelle Machine Shop, that's kind of the L-shaped building. So, they have drainage for that large addition closest to us, and then the building at the end of Carl Thompson has formal drainage. It's the other two properties on the, at the entrance, 487 Groton Road, and then the next one in, which we refer to as El Paco, the former fence company.
So, 487 Groton Road was the parcel we discussed in the spring, and I believe they were coming into compliance with stormwater drainage off of that parcel. And that's why, I guess, we're asking about how they tie into this drainage pipe.
Well, I don't know. They do, right? They're all individual drainage. So, that's not in the road. That would be, that wouldn't go to a public--
Yeah, I don't think it does, yeah.
Yeah, I think on the front of their building, it drains to Groton Road, and in the back, it drains to the, to the back.
There's a, an area in the, I think they were installing an area in the back.
Yeah, so, I agree. Anything else, sir?
Just a question to the board. If, is there another resource for me to go and try and find pipes that are in the ground? Is that, I don't know if that's--
I would talk with engineering.
Engineering?
Yeah.
Okay. Could I request the board not make a approval on this until there's a chance to see if there's anything that, like, see if there is a, this undocumented thing that could be found, just so we know what is there, whether or not that impacts--
You can certainly request it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes.
The mic.
Yeah, I want to thank the applicant for sharing the truck analysis with me. I haven't had a chance to read it all, but I got through a lot of it. And is all this up in the packets?
Oh, what stuff?
Is all this traffic--
Depending on whether you downloaded the packet Friday or Saturday, it was on Saturday.
Yeah. And what about the peer review? It's all in there now? So, that gave us what, like, one day to review it?
Sunday, two, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
I mean, to be honest, I mean, looking at, I mean, we didn't comment on the transportation report, because there really wasn't much to comment on.
I'm just wanting to know--
I mean, looking at the report compared to other--
Yeah, let me tell you why I'm asking. The number of trucks that I saw, I'm not sure, I have to find the right page. It was like 16 or 18. Talks about very minimal truck traffic. Is it okay if you look in there or you're-- But there's these large bays, right? So, clearly, there's going to be trucks going into these things. I, as a businessman, businesswoman, I wouldn't put up large bays if I wasn't going to have trucks going into them. And I can't imagine it would only be one truck per site per day. I would think there'd be deliveries or something. So, I was just curious if the numbers were right.
Well, I can speak to that. I mean, we hired a traffic consultant to do the counts out there. They did, we went through a scoping letter, they did a full traffic review, and then the town itself hired a traffic consultant to review those numbers.
Right.
So, we don't need to speak to the accuracy of them. We have experts that do that.
No, no, I would disagree.
And we know what uses we're proposing out here, that the uses that are allowed by right by the town of Westford. We think that these doors are sized properly, and the truck traffic is based on those estimates.
Okay. So, but I would disagree with what you said. The peer review only needs to review what you present. They don't need to review as to whether something else might play into it. They would only review what you present.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I may, this was actually a little different, because we asked, we actually did a scoping letter first here. So, we asked them what area we should study, and then we got that opinion, and then we went out and did the review based on their opinion. So, it wasn't as if we did a study on our own volition and they reviewed it. We actually did what they told us to.
So, again, I'm trying to just get clarity, because I want to make sure we're good neighbors, right? At the end of the day, and I, as a neighbor that's going to have to hear every truck that would go by--
Understood.
I want to know what the impact's going to be. So, looking at what I saw so far, and admittedly, I haven't had time to look at all of it, because it's short notice here. So, again, I would also ask that maybe we just give us a little more time, not close the hearing today. But looking at seven or 11 or 14, whatever it was for numbers here, it just doesn't wash to me in terms of the number of bays that we're talking about. It just doesn't make sense. And so, also, when we're talking about the condition of Carl Thompson, and whether it's going to be able to handle that kind of truck traffic each day, and we're already underwater, I've told you guys that, right? So, to suggest that there's no water issues out there would be a misnomer. We're underwater, and, and we've known that from last year. So, I know everybody's done some adjustments, and they've done their best, but I think this falls upon the town to look at the condition of Carl Thompson Road, okay? I will agree with you. I don't think it's all his responsibility. But I do think it's our responsibility as a community to be looking at what's the condition of the road, and what kind of development can it handle right now, and what mitigation or what needs to happen to make sure it's safe. I don't need it more flooded. I don't need it more icy. Nobody does. Right now, it's not so heavily traveled. We're talking about a lot more traffic coming in every day. So, I think we need to look at the drainage issues there. And we need to know realistically how much traffic is coming in in terms of trucks.
So, if I may, Chair, my background, I have a master's degree in statistics and queuing theory. So, it's been a while, but I did look at the transportation study. And in general, what we're looking for are the issues of accidents, congestion, and traffic flow, okay? The report was pretty clear. Traffic is very light, and those issues don't exist and are not forecast to exist as a result of this one development going in along that stretch of Groton Road. As, I really wish some of these questions had come up earlier in the hearing process, so that we could have had the applicant and his consultants address these. But I think we have discussed this as best we could. And, you know, I think we've talked about what would be coming into those bays. Right now, it's very generic in terms of what's happening there. So, I imagine if, in the future, there's some kind of a change of use, and there is something that as a trucking company, we're going to have to have that discussion before we, we kind of issue that change of use for this. Right now, these bays are, I thought were intended for industrial, commercial entities, but they're not meant to be a trucking depot. It's not meant to be, because I've asked this question, we've, we had this discussion, because we've discussed other similar situations in town with similar properties. And we were concerned about noise, concerned about hours of operation. But I'm going on the applicant's word in terms of, we don't expect a lot of deliveries there at this time. I think you said, what, one, one per day of a large truck. Anything else would be smaller delivery trucks. Is that correct, Melissa?
Yes, and I think that the, not only our study, but the review also says that. So, you don't have to take our word for it. You can also depend on your own traffic engineer for that. And I just want to make it clear that we're not sliding things into the report at the last minute here. These, the meat of these studies were done in October and September. So, the meat of the engineering report, the actual response to engineering and the traffic was done in October. We came back at the last meeting and a few weeks ago and made the changes as a reflection of those comments, and then went to draft decision and got clean letters as a result of making the changes. There wasn't much outstanding at the last meeting. So, nothing this evening is brand new in front of the board, except for these draft decisions and the clean letter from your engineering for which we've agreed to everything. I know I went off a little bit on your question--
No, 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 I understand.
But yes, the answer, the short answer is yes.
Yeah.
I just want to say other thing. One other thing, while we were out there, and I met with some of the neighbors, we did notice that there was a problem with the catch basin, and then there was some water that ends up sheeting across the road and bypassing the catch basin that's on the left-hand side. And we addressed that problem. The engineering has put a gutter line and increased the curb, so that all the water would go into the catch basin instead of going over it and onto the abutting property. So, we did make those changes.
Yeah, no, I forgot about that.
Thank you.
One more comment, if I may. Just, and I know we talked about this at the last meeting, with like the truck traffic and the condition of Carl Thompson Road. Yeah, and I think the parking lot is laid out for kind of standard spaces. There's no large vehicle truck spots designated for, for like a truck depot or a truck fleet. So, I think any change in use would have to come back to the board, if I'm not mistaken. But then, secondly, Carl Thompson, we, and I don't remember the numbers exactly, but we did check with engineering, and they have a status, or like a rating for every road in town and how their paving schedule is managed. And this was paved, I think, as recently as 2017 in the level of, and I forget the terminology, but it was a, it was a rating of like 85 or 84.
Some percent, yeah.
So, it was, it was, it was, you know, in the higher end of conditions, based on the town's monitoring of Carl Thompson. It is a public way. And so, there was no concerns with making improvements to Carl Thompson way, with the exception of what Walter just went through with that berm along Carl Thompson to help keep the drainage within the paved surface area.
Anybody else from the audience have anything else they want to add?
One other question, we're talking about all the traffic thing. I just a question for the applicant was, for the traffic study, what was the parameters of the type of business, since it's so wide, right? Because I could, I could very easily see it being very low traffic. It could be like seven people, seven, or is it six, whoever, like six businesses that, you know, have a few employees that come in the day, work the day, and then leave, and, fine. But it could also, under zoning by right, it could include a sawmill. It could include, which would be a separate issue for noise, but it could include, you know, a massage studio that qualifies. It could be a gym or any other health services. So, it could be something where there's a lot more traffic or not. So, I could, like, I don't understand, you know, I guess--
I'll let Attorney Robbins to answer the question.
Yeah, I mean, there's a variation into traffic studies, and you have a statistical expert here, and I won't pretend to be one. But they take that into account when they look at peak traffic times and what uses can be out here. They make a generalization based on traffic-- They make a generalization based on traffic counts in the morning and the afternoon, and then they do an overall scale as to what comes in here based on what's an allowed use in this district. If we want to change those uses, we would have to come back to this board. And as a matter of fact, your staff right now, when I come in for a building permit for a particular use, they look at the parking that's been approved for a certain use, even for a major commercial project, and they make sure that it's adequate, and if not, I would be back before this board. Uh, so traffic and parking is looked at in detail as part of this, uh, review, and if we change anything, we'll be back to this board again, either administratively or for a full public hearing.
So I guess, but when you change something, if you have a tenant, every tenant, you have to go to the board?
Change of use.
Yes. That's the rule, it's just a Lego, that's the way that it's looked at now in the town of Westford, if you have a mall and you want to change one of the Lego blocks out, you have to come in and speak to the building department and speak to the staff, and they get to determine whether or not that consists of a change of use. If it is a change of use, we have to come before this board.
And we look at different parameters-
You see them quite frequently, actually.
We have one tonight on here, Jim.
We have these all the time, and we look at things such as traffic, we look at noise, we look at drainage, um, all of that. Parking, depending upon the type of, um, uh, sanitary facilities, depending upon if it's a restaurant versus another kind of commercial entity. And if it was a sawmill, I'm going to be looking at noise, so, um, I'm not worried about parking with a sawmill, I'm worried about noise.
Yes, yeah, that was just another thing, it popped in my head, is a thing about the zoning rights. Is there, is there any limits of hours of operation, or would that-
Not yet.
That would be, that would be case by case.
But that's why I, I originally asked this question when we started the hearing, because we've had several others similar, this is, this is a new type of business seemingly for Westford, that, this is now the third one I can recall going in. And we did have to worry about hours of operation for one that involved plumbing and electrical because they use, um, metal cutting saws.
Or noise for residents.
So we were worried about the, the noise, so we had very limited hours of operation and standards for, I think, noise emanation.
So, just, again, because I'm ignorant for all your processes, uh, does that mean when a new tenant comes by, they would just go to the planning board, but it wouldn't be the normal thing where there's a special permit, so it wouldn't be, I wouldn't get a thing in the mail for that, right?
No, it's, it's a part of this, it's, it's a revision to the site plan, so it's, it's a site plan review, change of use.
For every new tenant they have?
Whenever a tenant changes over and the use changes, so if you change from a plumber to a plumber, there's no necessary change of use.
Every, every new use would be a change of use? Every new tenant, all the, all the first tenants?
First declared use, yes.
All right, and that, but, so, but in that case, would that be, all the abutters be notified for the planning board meeting, or no?
No, for change of use.
Typically the building department.
Okay. Oh, and then the building department would just decide if there's a change of use, if there's a change of use, then it would go to the planning board? In that case, would it come, would we be notified or not?
No.
So we just have to know?
No.
Okay.
These agendas are up every, every-
Yeah, no, I, I'm just kidding, I was just, I just, you know, again, just trying to learn your process, so, thank you.
I mean, we, for example, we have a, uh, change of use tonight on general business, and it's going on 110 from a cellphone store to a stretch lab, so it's basically- they come before us and we take a look at what the parking looks like and safety and traffic flow and all that kind of stuff.
Good to know, thank you.
Hi, Karen Ferri, 21 Forest Row, probably, a quick question maybe to put my mind more at ease, is there anything to prohibit one of your tenants to like have ten trucks stay overnight in the parking lot, so that there would be a lot of noise when they all leave, like say a, a big landscaping company or something like that?
I don't think there's anything to say that they can't park in the parking lot, there's no provision, yeah.
But we do have, I think, bylaws in the town that would limit them, they, they're not allowed to just keep running.
Well, it would run on light, but I mean, you know, like a landscaper, especially in the spring and summer, I mean, they're leaving, like, sometimes six in the morning to get their work done, so, you know, um, is there anything that would prohibit that?
No. That'd be discussed during the change of use hearings in terms of what the business is and what the noise is.
A change, okay.
And Mr. Chair, just to be clear here, we don't have outside storage of materials, so we don't anticipate those types of uses here, we don't have bark mulch or outside areas for any of that storage, uh, so any of the uses would have to be inside, go to their vehicles and leave.
Yeah, so these trucks would probably be stored inside coming out from the bays.
But they would not be doing any outside, it's like a contract for trucks, they wouldn't be loading their vehicles and leaving for the day, there's no-
No loading gravel, no loading mulch, nothing.
And this, uh, I, the IA zoning district doesn't allow for commercial parking lots, so we're not going to have commercial vehicles that just park there that don't have an office there.
I, I'm sorry, I'm still unclear on something.
I, I just want to be clear about the hours of operation, it sounds like you're saying that would be discussed later, not before your vote. And so, I'm pretty fine with, you know, work whatever hours you want, I don't care, I'm just more concerned about not hearing backup alarms that are waking me up at night. So, you know, I mean, even a pickup truck, it'd make a lot of noise in the middle of the night. So, um, again, I don't care if they're driving out there, I don't care if they're working inside twenty-four seven, I wouldn't care about that, but I am concerned about impact to folks that are sleeping, either at my place or theirs. So wouldn't that be part of this discussion before you take your vote on what the, maybe not hours of operation were, but hours of entry-exit? I mean, that's the kind of discussion we've had with other properties.
We've had that discussion for other properties when we knew what the use was.
The problem here is we don't know what, we don't know who's going to be the occupant.
That shouldn't negate the community's concern to make sure we're all in peaceful coexistence. Right? That's the whole point of this.
But I don't think we can condition the building that way, it's the business in the building that you can assign those kinds of parameters to, that's always been the way that I've seen it done.
And yet, we have though, with other properties.
Yeah, for the business, we do that on a business.
Business that's going to be using the property.
So, okay, given that we've only had like two days to look at this packet, um, I'm just going to ask if you guys could give us a little more time just to make sure our concerns are, um, viewed, addressed. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with a businessman looking to make money with his property, that's fantastic, that's better for all of us, taxes paid, it's better for all of us, right? Schools, teachers, everything, all good, so, you know, but once the building's up, it's up, he can't undo it, we can't undo it, it's, it's up, and it, there's no change that can be made afterwards. So, I've been thrilled that you've been willing to have conversation, there's been adjustments made, um, and, you know, there's still one little opportunity, uh, window here to allow for that conversation, and with things being posted at such a short notice, because I think it was the last meeting, I was asking to be in the loop on some of this stuff, I don't know what else has been going on other than what, um, he shared with me in email offline. It's, it sounds like there's been a flurry of communication, because you're saying some of this stuff was discussed early on, but we weren't privy to it.
Okay, you know what?
Right?
We gotta, we keep rolling with this, this has been four months, and this is the fourth public hearing.
Right, but I want to be clear, the information that's being presented now-
Yeah.
-wasn't made available to the community to review.
It was uploaded to the, the document management system, the traffic study, is that what you're talking about, the traffic study?
Yeah, and the peer review and such, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, you, you guys said it was uploaded, what, two days ago?
Saturday, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you heard that Saturday.
So if I wanted to hire my own peer, my own review, which I've done before, that doesn't give me any opportunity to do that.
When was the strap, what, the traffic study was conducted, when?
The full study from TEP, I think it was October 3rd.
It feels like a long time to not have that publicly available, I will, I will say.
I don't think we're talking about that letter, we're talking about then we responded, and then there was a further response, so that, it wasn't the meat of the study, so the big, the actual large portion of the study was completed on October 3rd and was posted, we actually talked about it at previous meetings.
Right, but was it, but was it made available to the public in the document management system? This is more of, this is more of a question for town staff than it is, please don't misunderstand, this isn't, this isn't being levied at the applicant, that feels like a long time for us to have access to information that we're not making publicly available.
Yeah, we, all are, we just publicly available always, um, but I do not know if it was uploaded to the document management system at that time, um, at the time, October was then peer reviewed over the course of several weeks.
I do recall in our last meeting, we discussed that it was all in, and it would be on tonight's agenda, but it hadn't had time to get before engineering to make it into the last packet at the last hearing. And that had, we had heard that it was delivered in mid-October.
Subsequently peer reviewed.
And peer reviewed, yeah.
Brought back to the town after.
And I think it was just, it had just come back, but not in time to be part of our packet.
Well, I'll ask the board, I feel bad holding up the applicant because we didn't put this information out to the public, I don't know that anyone's opinion's going to change.
After reading these thousand pages of traffic reports.
Well, I mean, to be honest, there are, there may be, you know, hundreds of pages, but it boiled down to, I think, what, ten or fifteen pages you really have to read. I don't think there's much reading or perusal that the layperson's going to do with all the data pages. And they were, you know, I looked through them and they, they looked fine, and there was a couple places I had questions, but answered my own question. But the, the study was pretty bland in the sense of, you know-
I don't disagree with you, and we, we are giving the public two days to read it.
I, yeah.
And we don't have the subject matter experts from town staff here to represent that, which I think is, and I've already stated my comments on the record, I think that's an egregious miss on our part, not on engineering here.
And responded to that, I think, in the future, we need to learn from this, and when we get such major reports, we need to get them up on the DMS somehow earlier than putting them in a packet.
And I've made the mental note that I guess if I have to request that engineering is here when we close a public hearing or are set to, I will make a mental note to do that. I have a different question going back to the point that the gentleman raised earlier, so what happens if you are clearing the land and you come across something that does appear to be drainage that isn't documented anywhere, even on town parcels, because this whole subdivision area is pre-storm water, what happens? You guys are digging, you come across some sort of a pipe underground that does appear to be some sort of a runoff pipe, now, what, what happens at that point?
Contact staff, I mean, because engineering has to review the site at certain points during construction, if you find a pipe like that, certainly something that has to do with drainage, certainly in a, in a specific situation like this, where we're giving the town an easement for that particular purpose, you'd call staff to come out and do an inspection.
Okay, so engineering's going to come out, they're going to walk the site with you guys, and some sort of a course correction's going to happen at that point.
Yes.
And that's likely going to wind up coming back for some sort of plan modification in front of this board.
It could be an illegal discharge that was not allowed on our property.
Yep.
Right.
In any case, it'd have to be a planned correction, yes, yes.
Understand- No, no, I get it, that's not a fault of-
There's no legal right to have someone dumping water onto your property, for us dumping them, they're not allowed to dump onto our property just as much.
Correct, understood.
So it goes both ways.
Totally understood, it still needs to be addressed with some sort of a change to the plan or something.
Which we would do, and we would work with staff, of course.
It would be, engineering would be the first call, they would have to come out on the site, would have to evaluate it, because would have to take it into consideration as to the entire design of the site.
Yeah.
Pre and post, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
And that's going to occur with any unforeseen site condition?
Anything, yeah, really, anything, whether you're digging for board health, whether you're digging for engineering, whether you're digging to put in water pipes, if, and you find anything, or if there's any changes, um, you have to account for that, and, uh, at the end, there's an as-built plan that also has to account for every single utility and every single aspect of the site, so there's many opportunities for that to be done.
Mr. Waterman, I'm going to ask you a question.
Yeah.
So he also brought up this, water is, is present four feet below the surface on this parcel, do you, do you agree with that?
I, I think it varied, but I think it did, it was as shallow as four feet, the estimated seasonal high, we did testing with the board of health, and on our own for the, for the stormwater, but we did a, a variety of tests, um, that confirmed that, so it does vary from different parts of the site, I think it's shallower as you're closer to the, to the entrance, and then it, it gets deeper as you go further into the property, if I remember correctly.
And you said stormwater filtration has to, can be two feet above.
Correct, with the groundwater mounding offset, so it's-
So are you, are, when you say groundwater mounding offset, you're going to build up the land in certain places where the stormwater system is?
Yeah, we're two feet above, the bottom of our infiltration system is two feet above the water table, plus whatever we calculated for mounting, which I didn't bring tonight, so.
All right, so I'll ask the board, do we close the public hearing? Do we have a meeting on the second, Joe?
We do.
Yeah. Do we continue to the second, have engineering come in? I would think that's, I think that's best, and, and I like you added engineering come in, I'd like to talk to engineering live.
I feel bad, we're holding up the applicant for town issues, but-
I, I, yeah, I mean, I agree with your statement earlier, um, Mr. Chair, I, I don't know that anything's going to change with more time, but I, you know, I can appreciate the public's concerns as well, so, I'm, I'm on the fence, I could, I could seem, I could go the other way on this.
I think there's, and there's also two lessons here, Joe, um, one, whenever we have some kind of major technical report that involved engineering, we would like to request that they be in attendance for this, or available via call-in. And, and secondly, um, I would ask that, when we get these major reports, let's find some way of pushing them out to the document management system so that they don't have to just be in a packet three days prior to the meeting. You know, give abutters more of a chance to review them, especially because we've had this one probably for close to a month or more, and even if we don't have the peer review, um, we should, probably should have put the transportation study out there, uh, and then we can wait for that peer review to also go out there. And this isn't on the applicant? Yeah?
I'll just add, you know, it would be nice to have engineering here tonight because, you know, the applicant, they've done stormwater management for their site, but there's obviously concern about stormwater management for the road itself, which I think will improve, given the discussion we've had tonight, you guys are making, taking some steps to do that, but I'd like to get engineering's thoughts on that, or at least make them aware that there is concern about drainage on Carl Thompson Road, you know, regardless of what's happening here on the site right here. I agree, I feel like we've put the applicant in a position to try to answer some questions on behalf of conversations with engineering versus having engineer, town engineers speak to them themselves, yeah. It's not, it's not the applicant's responsibility to fix Carl Thompson Road.
Agreed.
It's, should be, it's a town road, so the engineering should hear that.
What do you think, Tori?
I agree, I agree, I think we need engineering here, and I think, I think we're kind of stuck, I don't, as much as I, I feel bad for the applicant because we have been dragging this along, I think, we don't have a choice, we really need to have engineering here.
All right, when I come back in two weeks?
Sure, Mr. Chair, and I just, just a point for record, I just want to make it clear that with this particular applicant, uh, there hasn't been a comment or condition or a request that has been requested of this applicant that hasn't been made.
I agree.
Uh, whether it's been size, whether it's been landscaping, setbacks, uh, trying to meet with the abutters, trying to do additional landscaping for them, trying to keep additional fences, accessways, I think this particular applicant has gone completely out of their way to make sure that they've, um, tried to satisfy all the boards, and to the extent that they can, the abutters' conditions. But with that, Mr. Chair, I understand your concern, so yes, we'll agree to a two-week condition, an extension, is it two weeks, three weeks?
Two weeks, the second, December.
To December 2nd, yes.
So, and we appreciate it, and I agree, he has gone out of his way and listened to our requests, and thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so a motion to continue this to the public hearing to the second of December in this room at seven o'clock?
Still moved.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks, thanks.
You know, why don't we just pop to the second general business item to move things
along first, so PB 2208?
23.
I'm sorry, 2308, 472, 476, Grotton Road. This is a request for bond reduction for D. Donato Drive.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so engineering has reviewed this revised Form G, they didn't have any comments other than the date at the top from the original versions, which was addressed. So they are fine with the numbers as presented.
So anyone want to make a motion on this? Any questions first?
No questions.
Nope, nope.
No questions.
All right, so what is the number we're reducing to?
The retainerage amount. This will hold that until the way is accepted.
The 152, oh, two.
2233. Fifty-two thousand, twenty-two dollars and thirty-three cents.
All right, so can I get a motion to reduce the bond for PB 2308, 472, 476, Grotton Road? In the amount, the, the reduction is the 152?
To reduce to 150.
Reduce it to 152, 152,022 dollars and 33 cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, back to general business, the item A, 174 Littleton Road, PB 2428, request to authorize administrative review and approval for change in use from retail sales to general public to personal services establishment. Hi there.
Hello.
Want to tell us who you are and what you're going to do?
Hi, yeah, I'm the owner of the LLC, that's the franchise that's going in for Stretch Med. My dad was with me, he's in the bathroom right now, he's the founder of Stretch Med. But yeah, we're going in and we're pretty much just doing assisted stretch. We do one-on-one sessions where we hold in between a 25-minute to a 7-minute one-on-one session for someone to come in and see one of our stretch therapists and get their problems addressed.
All of them? Sign me up.
Physical.
Bob, any questions?
No.
Tony?
No.
Dylan?
No.
Darren? Actually, one question. What's your expected level of business, like on an hourly or daily basis in terms, just for a parking question?
At capacity, probably eight people in there at one time.
Eight, eight?
Yeah, 1,200 square feet. You've got it built out where we can only fit that many people. Four tables, four stretching tables, so that's all we can refill.
And the last, related to that, Joe, did we get any comment from engineering relative to this with respect to parking?
No, they didn't express any concerns. No other department actually had any, any concerns.
It sounds like this would be a lesser rate of, of influx of customers per hour than the previous use. Is that fair to say?
I think it's fair to say, yes.
Yeah, I would say so, yeah.
I just want to make sure, because given our last discussion.
And they own, they own, I guess, both plazas, so they, a lot of parking over there. And if ever get busy, we'll have staff park away in the back, so customers have.
In the visualization, you have like four tables, so your max occupancy is like four customers at a time or thereabouts?
Yeah, yeah, so it's four, well, eight, because we have these, we have flexibility trainers that people warm up on first, so they'll, they'll spend 50 minutes on that, then they move to the table, so at peak capacity, be eight.
Okay, thanks.
All right, great, any other questions?
No.
All right, can I get a motion to authorize administrative review and approval for change in use for 174 Boston Road, PB 2428? So moved.
Okay.